Elijah, are you waiting for me to open it up?
Yes, we're on.
Alright, so are you all set up? You ready?
We're ready.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was waiting for you to get set up. Alright, so I'll open the Bridgewater Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, April 1st, 2020, at 6:30 PM. This is a Zoom meeting that we're having. What I'll do is I'm gonna read a document that we prepared into the record. The Bridgewater Planning Board Pursuit of the Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 Order Suspending Certain Provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 Order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Bridgewater Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance, no in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. Meeting is being recorded, and within 48 hours, we will post it on the town's website and/or other social media pages of the recording. So there, the following members of the Bridgewater Planning Board participating remotely: myself, Patrick Driscoll, Raymond Dejamian, the Vice Chair, Gene Guarino, the Clerk, Michael McDonald, Stephen Geller, and William Akins. During this meeting, all votes of the board will be taken as roll call. So the voting members will be Patrick Driscoll, Raymond Dejamian, Gene Guarino, Michael McDonald, Stephen Geller. The following Bridgewater Town staff will also be participating remotely. They will not be voting. Jennifer Burke, who is our Community and Economic Development Director, Elijah Romulus, our Assistant Town Planner, Azubat Anar, the Town Engineer, and Leslie Dorn, our Office Administrator. At this time, everyone's mic is muted. The board's mic will be unmuted through the whole meeting, and as items appear on the agenda of the project, project representative mics will be unmuted. If the project is a public hearing that allows for public comment, we ask you that we use the chat feature to ask questions by listing your name and address of your question. The chair will recognize the questions in order. You can also use the Raise My Hand feature in the participant menu, and you will be unmuted when the chair recognizes you. Again, please state your name and address before asking a question. If you are on the phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. So, do any of the board members have a question? Alright, so that being said, I'll open the first public hearing that we have on the agenda. And before I open the first public hearing, I just want to state that we had some board business to discuss ordinance D FY20006, which was a zoning ordinance. It was to amend the town bylaws in the Plan Development District, or to add to the Plan Development District. That hearing has continued right now to April 15th. And we had the zoning ordinance with Attorney Mark Bobrowski. That was a public hearing. That was to be continued. That's going to be continued to May 6th. So if you're here for the NIP zoning, or the Mark Bobrowski zoning, those will not be brought up tonight. Those have been rescheduled to April 15th for the NIP, and May 6th for the zoning reclassification. So, with that being said, I'll open the first public hearing we have, which is a continuation of Twin Mansion Estates. Michael Meoli is the applicant. This is a definitive subdivision. The proposal to create a two-lot subdivision on his Twin Mansion Estates off of South Street, map 125 lot 17. So Elijah, I'll turn it over to you. You're gonna invite Mr. Koska into the meeting?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Hi, Mr. Koska. How are you?
I'm fine. How about yourself, Mr. Chairman?
I'm good, thank you.
Alright. Thank you for having this meeting.
So Elijah, is Mr. Koska on the call?
Yeah, looks like he's on a phone.
Okay, can can you tell him what you have up? How do you want to work it with him on the phone?
Yeah, so, Mr. Koska, if you want to go through, we have your letter that you sent to the board per the updates, as well as the updated plans, so if you just refer to the page number of the plan, I can always go to that specific plan, and we can go from there.
Okay, thank you, Elijah. For the record, Mr. Chairman, my name is Michael Koska. I'm here representing Meoli Estates in their endeavor for a two-lot subdivision off of South Street in the town of Bridgewater. In addressing Azu's comments, the Town Engineer, letter dated February 14, 2020. Item number one: The dimensions of the proposed roadway at its intersection with South Street are incongruent with the dimensions shown on the October 10, 2003 Form A Plan that forms the basis of the subject definitive subdivision plan. The engineer should clarify the conflicting geometric data. Mr. Chairman, as was brought up at the last meeting, that the radii at the street was 15 feet according to the 2003 plan. We have reconfigured the intersection for a 20-foot radius and making it part of the subdivision. The derived subdivision will front off of Mansion Way, and it'll have a total frontage of 280 feet, 280.89 feet of frontage, and the area will be 44,095 square feet, which would conform to the zoning as far as frontage and area. Number two: The changes in dimensions along South Street for the land of 1968 South Street constitute a modification of the land as part of the definitive subdivision plan. Therefore, 1968 South Street lot should be included in the fee, filing fee calculation. The Town Planner, the Town Engineer indicated that the fee might be $100 or $200. I have discussed this with the applicants, and they have no problem in paying the required additional filing fee in the with the modification of this with this existing Form A Plan at 1968. Number three: The requisite building rectangle should be shown on the two lots in order to verify their compliance with the Town, with the Planning Board rules and regs governing the subdivision of land in the town of Bridgewater. On the sheet 1 of 5, both Lot 1 and Lot 2 have 110 by 75-foot requisite square. I tell you, we're lucky. It's just about fit on the 40-foot setback on Lot number 1, but it is, it does fit on the lot according to your regulations, and that is shown on Sheet number 1. The limit of clearing associated with the subdivision development should be outlined on the plan. If the board was to kindly turn to Sheet 3 of 5, there is a limit of erosion control that would be placed along the limit of clearing. It would begin, let's see, on the northeasterly side on the lot proceeding westerly along the backside of Lot number 1, it would envelop the the stormwater control structures, and it would continue in a westerly direction towards the property line, being the westerly property line of Lot number 2. It's labeled on the plan as erosion control limit of clearing. Item number five: The location and type of proposed street trees should be shown on the plan. As you know, we engaged with the landscape architect, and he provided with a plan. The plan was dated 1/13/20. He showed on the plan, taking into account where the driveway locations were, the street trees, which would be October Glory Red Maple, and those are shown on the plans. There also should be a plan in your file of the landscape plan that was done by a Mr. Keen. I think one of the things that came up at the other meeting was, is there availability of planting more street trees? Lot number 3, being part of the subdivision, not shown on the plans, but an offer to the Planning Board that not within the existing fence line where there's a swimming pool in there, and it's basically all concrete, but two trees could be planted to continue with the radius of curvature of the cul-de-sac, the radius of the curve of 65 feet, onto the property of 1968. And then beyond, towards South Street, there could be two trees planted that would introduce the two-lot subdivision off of South. The adjacent neighbor, 1940, as I had stated at the meeting, there is a swale that is planned there for stormwater control, and so that area is not available. Meoli's, number six: Meoli's Way is a proper name. regs do not allow to use the proper names as a street name. We've changed the name to Mansion Way. I hope that is okay with the board. Number seven: As a result of the underscience discussion with the Water and Sewer Superintendent, the proposed loop water main may be eliminated and replaced with individual 2-inch service pipes for the two lots if the applicant installs a fire hydrant and its pertinent structures at the intersection of the subdivision roadway and South Street. Mr. Chairman, on Sheet 3 of the plans, to the northeasterly side of the proposed road, there is a proposed fire hydrant with shut-off. There would be a gate valve placed in the street, and from there, as specified in the Water Superintendent's letter, it says, the proposed hydrant should also be tapped off the existing 8-inch water main. And so, we have on the, again, back to Sheet 3, we have on the, that would be the westerly side of the road, two 2-inch water lines that would individually serve with a shut-off before the house on lots 1 and 2. Lot number 3 is already connected into the town water. So we would provide the fire hydrant in that location, which would provide water in the event of a fire within 500 feet of the dwellings, as specified by the Water Department. Number eight: A waiver is required for the proposed use of reboats at the walk corners in lieu of the required 5-inch square by 30-inch-long concrete bounds. At the front corners, we have proposed all concrete bounds, and that way it would not necessitate a waiver of the subdivision control law rules and regs. So that was the extent of both the Water and Sewer Department requests, and hopefully we have satisfied the deficiencies as noted by the letter of February 14, 2020. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Koska, I just had one question myself. So, we're, Lot 3 is part of the subdivision now. Adding, I'm okay, I mean personally, I'm okay with the trees not going in the pool area. We don't want to do that, but I think our reg is every 40 feet, we require a tree. Is four gonna satisfy that, excluding the pool area?
Let me see, I had a scale here, and every 40 feet, let's see, along the cul-de-sac, there's, let's see, 60 there, and about 40 there. However, there is a driveway, so two trees would meet your requirement there. From, and to compensate, well, there's about 85 to 90 feet from that block wall of the pool, and to South Street. So the two that would be proposed there, a total of four, would meet the 40-foot requirements. If you notice on Mr. Keen's plan, he put in some extra trees back there, and why he did that was he put one on each side of the driveway, which actually there's a lot more trees there than the 40-foot requirement, so there is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 trees for the two lots on the cul-de-sac.
Alright, so, just so I'm clear, you're proposing adding four more trees, the same, the same variety of species alternating just as the others are proposed, correct?
Yes, and that would be in a planting easement, and it would be two on, call it, the south side of the existing concrete wall fence line there, and two to the north of it, towards South Street, there would be all of the same species in color, and and it would fulfill the requirements of the subdivision control law.
Any board questions for Mr. Koska?
Just in the very beginning, I'm not, I thought I heard, and I'm not sure if that's what it was, but the frontage on 1968, I think you said 258 or something like that, but it's one-
280.89 feet.
Oh, okay, because I thought on the, where is it? On the back thing, it said 158 or something like that. So it's 200. Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Yes, if you look on Sheet 1 of the plans where it says Mansion Way, beneath that, it has a bearing and a distance. The distance is between just those two bounds is 184.17 feet, not even including the two radii, the 20-foot radii, and the 65-foot radii. But on the 40-foot setback line, it would be 280.89 feet, which, you know, as you probably know, the board requires the minimum of 150 feet of frontage on the street, and also at a 40-foot setback line in the RA district.
Okay, just wanted to clarify the numbers.
Yep, yep.
Any other board questions for Mr. Koska? Is Mr. Antonero unmuted, or is he?
I am on, Mr. Driscoll.
I'm Mr. Antonero. Are you okay with all the revisions?
That would be correct, Mr. Chairman. I did speak with Mr. Koska, and I believe I communicated with the Assistant Town Planner, Mr. Romulus. These items address my comments. I just want to make sure that that, I believe, this $200 filing fee that we are short by, so I think that needs to be paid. But that can be made a condition of approval if the board were to vote to approve the application.
Okay. The only other question I had, excuse me, from Mr. Romulus was, this is a private way, so in addition to the normal conditions, and in addition to the two conditions that he proposed, which were the limit of clearing is, it cannot go beyond what they've shown, and the lots created per the subdivision shall not be further subdivided. I had, you know, we have to add the four trees, we have to, he has to pay the additional fee, and also, this is a private road, so in the past, we've asked for the homeowners association to be established and reviewed by the town prior to lot release and recorded with each lot. That should, that's also in the standard conditions, correct, Mr. Romulus?
So we'll have to add that the the private roads stay private in perpetuity.
And the homeowners association would require prior to lot release, and it has to be tied to each lot, correct?
Yes, the homeowners association is in the standard conditions.
Recorded and tied to each lot, okay.
Correct.
So in addition to your two, I think we want to add those four conditions, the four trees, pay the fee, the homeowners association, and road remaining private? Are there any other board recommendations for conditions? I can't, I can't see everybody, so I don't know if anybody, is everybody, can everybody hear me?
No.
No, I'm good.
Alright, so, do we have any other discussion? Do we want to open it up to the public at this point, Mr. Romulus? Is there any public, have they made any comments? Would they like to ask any questions?
So at this point, if there is anyone in the public, they should be, they should have the function to unmute themselves if they do have any comments related to the to this item.
Can you see, Mr. Romulus, if anybody's attempting to do that?
I haven't had, I did not get any notifications of anyone raising their hand. So, no.
Alright, so last chance, any public, would you like to ask a question, comment? Are you comfortable with this voting to close the public hearing, Mr. Romulus? Are you sure there's nobody trying to log on or call in?
I'm comfortable with that. If Mr. Koska's amenable to the conditions that we have laid out, if you can just confirm.
Yes, I am, Mr. Romulus. In fact, Mansion Way has, that it is, in fact, the private road in the parentheses there, and naturally, we filed by the rules of a four lot or less subdivision. So, if that is part of the rules as to the conditions stipulated, then that is what is accepted.
Alright.
Alright, so would a board member like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Who seconded that?
Michael.
Michael, I can't see you, Michael, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem.
Any discussion on the motion? Alright, so, this has to be a roll call vote? So I'll start with Mr. Geller?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Are we saying, is it right to say aye or yes, Mr. Romulus?
Uh...
Aye. Say that again?
I would say yes or no.
Okay. Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry, let's do that over again, so we have a motion to close the public hearing that's been seconded. Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Jamian?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So now, do we have a motion on the project?
Make a motion for Mansion Way to utilize the standard conditions plus the $200 fee that needs to be paid. The, stay within the limit of the clearing as it states on the plans. And and for trees, and whereas it's a private road, it needs to have an HMO before each, for each lot. Was that-
Yep.
And the lot should not be subdivided.
Alright, do we have a second to that, then we can have a discussion. Second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve with the standard conditions plus the two conditions that Mr. Romulus proposed, plus adding the four trees, paying the additional fee. Ms. Guarino, I think you mentioned 200, but we don't know if it's quite 200, correct?
Okay.
Mr. Romulus? So whatever the fee is, correct?
Yes, correct.
The HOA will be established prior to lot release and recorded with each lot, and the road will remain private, correct?
Yes.
So that was the motion, and it was seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Who seconded the motion?
Steve.
Thank you.
Alright, if there's no discussion, I'll do the roll call vote again, signified by saying yes or no. So Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Ms. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Jamian?
Yes.
And a yes as well. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Koska.
Thank you very much, members of the board, for your time this evening, and I guess we'll chit-chat a little further down the line. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Okay, are you ready to continue, Mr. Romulus?
Yes, I'm ready.
Alright, so the next item that we have on the agenda, I noted earlier, this is the Town of Bridgewater zoning ordinance. It's Attorney Mark Bobrowski. This is a public hearing, so we should take a vote, even though we notified the public to continue it to May 6th. We probably should take a vote where it's a public hearing, Mr. Romulus?
Yes, you should take a vote.
Alright, so do we have a motion to continue the Mark Bobrowski zoning reclassification, zoning ordinance meeting to May 6, 2020, at 6:30 PM?
The mode.
So, by Michael?
Yep.
Do you second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Do you still want to roll call vote for this one, Mr. Romulus?
Yes.
Alright, so, Mr. Jamian?
Yes.
Ms. Guarino?
Yes.
I should be saying Mrs. Guarino, I apologize. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
And myself, I'm yes, okay. Alright, so the next item we have on the agenda is ordinance D FY20006. This is the zoning ordinance. It's our discussion to amend Section 8 and 9.6 of the town bylaws. Tentatively, we have this continued to April 15th. Would you like to vote on this as well, Mr. Romulus?
There's no need to vote on this, because it's a public meeting.
Is there any objection to that by the board, to the date that we're continuing this to? Alright, so, the next item we have on the agenda under board business is Old Field, Old Field District, case 2, Long Belt Homes, this is a special permit modification. This is a request to reconfigure lots affecting the common open space in a Form A plan. So I can turn it over to you, Mr. Romulus, and then we can turn it over to Attorney Castaneda. I see he's joining us.
Yes, so we got, this was kind of a follow-up to make sure- Yes, so we got, this was kind of a follow up to make sure that we were, um, on par with our, uh, open space special permit. Uh, basically, this is following up to the A and Rs that were submitted to, um, reconfigure, uh, some of the lots that were abutting the open space. And so, um, this special permit modification request is, uh, a follow up to that.
Okay, so in our packet, there are two different, um, plans. One, we treated as an A and R last time. And that was done by Silver Engineering. Um, and that we endorsed as an A and R, but we asked Mr. Castaneda, Attorney Castaneda, to, um, come back as a minor modification, is that the one we should handle first?
Uh, yes, we can handle that one first.
So we've already approved it as a, um, a format, correct?
That's correct.
But just to, just to amend the special permit, this is a, so we should vote as to whether this is a major or minor modification for us, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so do we have a vote by the board, um, to make this either a major or minor modification? I think we discussed in our last meeting it would be a minor.
Yeah. That's. I'll make a motion that, uh, this should be a minor modification for the Old Field Estates.
Now, do you want a motion for both of them at the same time, Mr. Romulus, or just because we have one by SVA and one by prime?
Um, I would do it separately for each one.
Okay, so this is the, the one affecting, um, my print is small here, it looks like, is that 12A? Is it, uh? No, if you could go up, Elijah. Yeah, could you, that, that, what are those lots, 14, 13 and 12?
Right, uh, yeah, 12, that's important, yep.
So we have a motion by Mr. Geller to make the, uh, alteration of lot 14, 13 and 12 and part of the open space a minor modification, do we have a second?
Second.
By Michael?
Yeah.
Any, any discussion on this, we already went over this particular one and endorsed it? Any questions for Attorney Castaneda? Do we have a motion, do we have a motion? Actually, there's no, is there any public questions or comments on this, Mr. Romulus?
Um, no, there weren't any comments, um, just that we make sure that we follow with the, uh, special permit modification.
Okay, so we, so we have a motion by Mr. Geller and a second by Mr., um, McDonald, right?
Yes.
So do we have all in favor?
I, uh.
Oh, I gotta do a roll call, I'm sorry, both have us. All right, so, um, Mr. Geller? Yes, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Corino?
Yes.
Mr. Jamian?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, do we need to, um, is that good enough, or do we need to make him, have a motion to accept it? We are, or is that, is that good enough, Mr. Romulus?
So that's good enough.
Okay. All right, so the next one we have is the, um, a minor modification, um, affecting, is it just that one lot, lot? Is that 46, is that 40, 48A?
Well, 48, yeah.
48, okay. So.
Lot 48 and parcel A.
So I, I just have a, Attorney Castaneda, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I just, it's part of the minor modification, I don't know if you recall, but parcel A has the, there's like 11 gravel spaces that are going to be used to, for people to park to, to utilize the common open space as well as the Jenny Leonard Park?
Uh, yep, I'm aware of that.
And there's also a mailbox for the neighborhood on that same parcel, correct?
Which is already installed.
Is there, is there a way to break the mailbox off the parking so that the, so that the parking that the potentially the public could utilize is not on the same parcel as the mailbox?
Um, uh, you, uh, you mean, uh, to put it somewhere else, or you just mean to set, to throw the subdivide parcel A?
Subdivide parcel A, you know, just, just so, I, I think it's that common open space worth to become the Town of Bridgewater lands, uh, but Jenny Leonard.
So yeah, so you want to, you want to carve out the, the, uh, so the, so the, uh, parcel A as reconfigured will house the central mail delivery, uh, facility and be owned by the HOA. And the portion of parcel A that's, uh, carved out for the parking becomes part of common open space.
Yeah, is that, I just think it's, I just think it's cleaner for everybody, that way.
I think it's the way, I think, I think it's the way you want it, I don't think you want the HOA, um, controlling the parking spaces. I think you just want them controlling a facility that serves their specific needs. So, yeah, that makes all the sense in the world and by.
And that, and that way, and that way, the HOA isn't saying you can't park here to the people that don't live in the neighborhood and then.
Yeah.
And then, and then there's no liability to the HOA if somebody gets hurt or falls, you know?
Yep.
So, okay, is that a condition that if the board is willing to, we could make as a condition of the, um, minor modification, Mr. Romulus?
Uh, yes, I would, I would say that's a good, uh, addition to the modification.
There's, Mr. Antonero, or any board members, or Ms. Burke have any comment matter?
Good idea.
Nope, good idea.
So, Ms. Burke, are you still with us?
I am, I'm all set, I, I think that's fine, I, I think if he's agreeing to it, it's fine.
Okay.
And I am, we'll, we'll, we'll come back with another plan that further separates, uh, parcel A uh, to serve those two different purposes.
Correct.
And we'll, we'll lay it out and we'll draw out, like, like we did in Bridgewater Preserve when we altered that, uh, we, we showed the layout of the parking spaces and we'll do that again on that, uh, revise, on that plan that, that separates the, uh, parcel A.
So, so Ms. Burke, with the town, where, where this is land abutting the Jenny Leonard Park, and we hope to revitalize that at some point, is this common open space, does the town always get the first right of refusal, or could we ask for the first right of refusal on this piece?
I don't know that the town always has it, I would have to go back and read the original special permit and see how it was laid out.
Could, so could, could we, Attorney Castaneda, would you be open to allowing the town to have first right of refusal as a condition on this?
I, I, I certainly would be, I don't believe that, uh, that's part of, that's not in the, uh, special permit presently, yours, I believe your standard language regarding, uh, the ownership of the, uh, open space is in the special permit. I don't, I, I don't recall any mention of a right of first refusal. We have absolutely no, uh, objection to that at all.
So could we make that, could, just, or I'm think, just trying to think, I think that the Jenny Leonard Park is a nice 11 acre piece that doesn't really have good access from Cherry Street.
No, it doesn't.
This, this provides parking for it and it'd be, you know, if somebody else owned the parking, somebody else owned the park and somebody else owned the land in between, I think it'd be kind of messy, so.
Yeah.
If the town could have first re, right of refusal to that open space piece, which, which is called, what is that, 2, 2A, I see, Mr. Romulus?
Yeah.
Yes.
Once it's, once it's reconfigured to house the parking, I think that'd be great, and I'd like to see that as a, a second condition.
I, I would just, I would just suggest that you condition that, that he required to offer it to the town and not that the town take it, because if the townsides, they don't want it, you can't.
Correct, yeah, I mean, that's up to the, that's up to the council, but if the council wants it, I'd like to be able to take it.
Correct.
And I, I think for recreation and just having that contiguous land with the parking would be beneficial, so.
Yep.
So there's just, those, those are the two conditions I'd like to propose for, uh, parcel A, one be reconfigured. At the park, that, you know, the parking go to parcel 2A, the mailbox be standalone, which is the HOA. And then the town have first right of refusal to the common open space 2A.
I just, just as a, a, a point, um, I, I don't, uh, just so you're wording it properly. Uh, I think that's kind of what, uh, Jennifer was, uh, was referring to. Um, you, you, you really, it's not really a right of first refusal, because we're not going to be offering to convey or sell it to anyone.
Correct, yeah.
And a right of first refusal would be, uh, would, would be something that would be done in conjunction with that. I think, I think what, what it would need to be is that we will, um, upon completion of the project or whenever, whenever you, however you want to trigger it, uh, but we will upon completion of the project, offer it as a donation, uh, to the town.
That'd be great, perfect, so if that could just be worded as a condition, I'm, I'm fine with that, so.
All right, I'll, I'll make sure I have that.
Okay. Any board questions for Attorney Castaneda?
I'd like to just point out too, speaking of, uh, Jenny Leonard Park, uh, the condition in your permit um, regarding the dismantling of, uh, all the, uh, equipment and structures and whatnot is, I don't know if you're aware of this, but it's been fulfilled.
Oh, great.
Yeah, that, that was done, uh, several weeks ago.
Because, because I don't think you had to do that until like, uh, 26 building permit or something, right?
We just, we just felt we, it, it, we had, we wanted to get access to it before the winter and, and it was just, uh, something, we had an opening in the schedule and, uh, I, I directed our, uh, site people to to just take care of it, so they, they did. And, and in, in point of fact, as to how difficult it is to get to a Jenny Leonard Park from Cherry Street.
Right.
Uh, we actually accessed it from within the subdivision.
Yeah, and that's, that's why I think that open space behind it and that parking would be such an asset to that little park, you know?
Yeah, it, it absolutely would be, it's, it's almost impossible, you, you gotta be a mountain goat to, to get up there from Cherry Street.
Yeah, I was a mountain goat, I tried it. The swing set and the seats and all that out of there?
Everything, everything.
Okay, all right, so do we have, do we have any other discussion on this? Do we have, um, do we have a motion then to accept this as a minor modification with the conditions discussed?
So moved.
By?
Michael.
Michael, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem.
Um, do we have a second for discussion?
Second.
Mr. Jamian?
Yes.
I'll second it.
No, so we, we have a motion by Michael, a second by Mr. Jamian. Um, any further discussion on this? Okay, let me get my list in. So, uh, Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Corino?
Yes.
Mr. Jamian?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so, thank you, Attorney Castaneda.
Well, I think we need a vote on the A and R plan as well.
Oh, okay, all right, so to endorse it?
Yes.
Okay. So it's the same plan, do we have a vote to endorse the, um, A and R plan that's before us? The office has reviewed the A and R plan, correct?
That's correct.
Do we have a motion to endorse the A and R plan?
So moved.
By Mr. McDonald, do you have a second?
I'll second.
By Mrs. Corino? Um, Mr. Geller, oh, I'm sorry, any discussion? Okay, Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Corino?
Yes.
Mr. Jamian?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, okay, great, thank you, Attorney Castaneda.
Thank you, and, uh, especially to, to all of you, be, uh, be careful and be safe.
Thank you very much.
You too.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you. All right, so, um, let's find the. Jean, I miss your reading. All right, so next item on the agenda, there it is, Elijah. We have a, um, a letter dated February 26th from, uh, Lawrence P. Silva of Silver Engineering. Asking for a, uh, two-year extension of Sprague's Place. Um, on behalf of our client, Silver Engineering Associates, SCA, would like to request an extension to the planning board approval of Sprague's Place that was granted on Feb, April 4th, 2018. A two-year extension will allow for the completion of the permitting process with mass DOT prior to the start of construction. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me, and that was signed by Lawrence P. Silva, uh, president of Silver Engineering, and this is for Revel Realty Trust. Um, Mr. Romulus and Ms. Burke and Mr. Antonero, any comments?
Uh, no, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I think of, uh, uh, the extension, it's, uh, it's warranted. And I don't see any, I don't see any, uh, useful purchase you will serve to not, uh, to not grant it. But I will not grant more than a two-year extension, though.
Okay.
I agree.
I will not recommend, I will not recommend more than a two-year extension.
Okay, any board comments?
Uh, my thought was a one-year extension.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Can I, can I address the board at this point?
Sure.
Uh, I heard the, um, the, the possibility of going, well, what, the problem is, is that they have not been able to initiate work. So once they start work, they really would need the full two week, uh, two years to complete it. And given the situation right now, it's going to be difficult for them to start until sometime in the summer. So I think a one year would not be enough for them to get to the point of not having to come back again. The two year would be, uh, almost as if it were just approved now and they would be going forward, so I think that, in my opinion, would be more prudent to let them have the two years.
Um, question, uh, your letter states, Larry, uh, that it, it's because of the permitting process, that's the issue.
Well, that's, that's, that's the one that is the last hurdle that we're dealing with right now. Um, initially, there were, uh, other issues, you know, where they went back to do some, um, uh, some evaluation of, uh, cost, you know, looking to try to reduce costs. Looked at different options, the even possibility coming back to the board with an alternative plan. They, um, did this for a while. They had us do a number of other kinds of concepts and so forth, and then came around to the conclusion that the way that we had it approved, uh, was the way that they should go forward. And so based on that, they got pricing from contractors and they were ready, uh, to go forward. And that's when they asked us to get the mass DOT permit. And so that we, that process is a little bit more cumbersome than it used to be. So we've been going back and forth with mass DOT, satisfying their questions. And so they should have those all addressed in the next month. And if everything, uh, gets cleared, then the start construction with the virus and everything, um, then, uh, they should be, I could say, early summer, they should be started. And so typically you would have two years to do the, the job, it's just that they've been delayed this amount of time.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, we have a, I guess, it looks like Bill raised his hand, if you want to.
Yeah, I just had, I had a question about why, what was the reasoning behind suggesting one year? My feeling has always been that, uh, if, if there's a need to go beyond a minimum year, then we can always give another year, but, but if we're, if we're talking about an extension, that the idea is not necessarily to, to give the same time span that we had before. I'm just thinking with the. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Maybe, maybe the C or something.
Is that Mr. Montevero trying to say something?
Uh, I've, no, I said that a two-year extension will be, uh, will, will not be, uh, would not be unwise. Uh, just, uh, given the, uh, what it takes to move, uh, to do the work. And, um, uh, if, if you give him a one-year extension, they will, I guarantee you they'll be back here in a year. And they will be having the same discussion. So I don't think, uh, I don't think, uh, you are overextending yourself, if you will, uh, by giving him a two-year extension. It's just a, uh, a practical amount of time to, uh, do the work.
Especially with the current, the current circumstances that we're all facing.
You know, so I think, uh, I will, I will recommend a two-year extension, but it's up to the board.
And Mr. Antonero, this was built to, so this is built to the current regs anyway, correct?
That is correct. That is correct.
Yeah, and I'm just considering the, I mean, we're all in extraordinary circumstances here. Uh, we don't know how long this thing's gonna last.
Any other board comments on this?
With the two years personally.
Was that Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Yeah.
Are you okay with Mr. Jamie and with the?
Yeah, I'm okay. I ju- I just, uh, yeah, I'm fine.
Yeah, I I actually had this, I actually had this conversation with uh Miss Burke when we got the request. Because I thought that maybe a one year was the the way to go, but we we did talk about the current, you know, the current times, both health-wise and potentially economic. So after speaking to her, I was comfortable with a a two-year extension. But I would agree, in normal times, a one year would probably be sufficient. So do we, any more discussion or can we get a motion?
Make a grant the two-year extension.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Jamie? Any discussion? Okay, um, we'll take a vote down. Um, Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Jamie?
Yes.
And I'm okay with it, yes. Okay. Okay. Next question. Can you guys hear me? I'm getting a lot on. Yes, I can hear you. Getting a bad connection, so. Um, next up, we have Gatsby Drive. This is Mr. Samuel Shoney. I might, I hope I'm saying that right. There's a lot, a lot release request, uh, and he provided a road bond calculation.
Uh, yes, so um we got a request for the road bond calculation as well as a lot release, and um we made sure that um our highway superintendent checked it out, and he provided the calculation as shown. And uh we see no issue with um the numbers provided.
Okay, so my my only question is, did we receive an HOA, and has that been recorded and tied to the deeds of each lot?
Yes, that's correct.
It has been?
Yes.
Who am I, I I can't see who's saying yes.
I'm I'm sorry, I, um, Sam Shoney.
Sam Shoney, I said yes.
That was, that was recorded at the very onset, when we got the approval for the road.
All right, great. So we, and the office has confirmation, Mr. Ramus, that recording info, that's been, they've been recorded to each individual lot?
That is correct.
Okay. And Mr. Antonero, are you comfortable with the um road bond calculation and the amount of ninety thousand five five zero?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, but uh, yeah, um, I think I had mentioned this to uh Mr. uh Ladue, um, in his calculation, he's including stormwater maintenance. This is gonna be a private road, as with the, as with the other ones. Uh, why will they be paying the town a non-refundable fee of five thousand dollars if they're gonna be responsible, and that's basically why we uh four or less number of lot subdivision, it will remain private in perpetuity. Uh, Mr. Romulus just verified that they recorded the um actual um uh document. Why are we extracting or trying to extract five thousand dollar non-refundable fee from them?
So I would agree. So you're you're suggesting, Mr. Antonero, that we reduce the bond to eighty-five thousand five five zero?
That's correct.
And zero out the five thousand stormwater maintenance? Correct?
That is correct.
Any board questions on the bond calculation of the project itself? Um, now, Mr. Ramus, how many lots are they looking to release?
Uh, they're looking to release three lots.
And how many are there, three?
Correct.
There's three lots.
So in our bond calculation, don't we withhold a minimum of one until the till, until the bond is recalculated after the other two are built?
Uh, that's normally how how we um go about it. Um.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may interject, um, uh, Mr. Romulus, um, if I may interject, uh, we do those on uh like what we did on uh the preserve, uh, as well as Trinity Circle. Those are gonna be publicly accepted roadways. And we are trying to work, the the purpose of that is to guarantee that there will be minimal problems for the town. In this particular case, the purpose of holding the bond money is to guarantee that the homeowners that are buying into the subdivision are receiving a roadway that is built according to their approved plan. After that, the maintenance becomes their responsibility. So that is what we are guaranteeing here with the bond. Quite unlike what we would require on a subdivision that would be accepted by the town. So that is the, just like the stormwater maintenance issue. You don't require stormwater maintenance fee, and you don't hold back one lot. Basically, the bond is to satisfy the requirement of making sure that the road will be built at, under drainage system as approved by the board.
My my only concern is, does that, do our rules and regs say that, Mr. Antonero? Because I, what what happens if two houses get built and this goes on for a while, and then the road deteriorates?
Well, you don't, you don't really, you you're holding ninety, you'll be holding fifty-five thousand dollars that you can exercise if the road stays a while, of not working properly, just like what we did on um on um Lo- Nolan Park. The board voted and released the money to go towards the construction.
Okay, do you have any comments on that, Miss Burke and Mr. Romulus?
Uh, no, I would agree with the town engineer. Um, I would hold on to the bond money um in the event that an issue were to happen with the road, as opposed to holding the lot.
Good. So he's looking to release all three lots, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a, any board discussion? Board questions?
And Mr. Mr. Chairman, uh, just to uh elaborate a little bit more, that is why we went also to fifteen percent, if five zero, fifty percent contingency as opposed to the ten, twenty percent that was being done before.
Okay. All right, so do we have um, I mean, if there's no discussion, do we have a motion? So, Mr. Ramus, what are the lots, are they, are they lots one, two, and three?
Uh, yes, lots one, two, and three. I can uh try to bring up the actual subdivision plan, but it's lots one, two, and three.
I have to step away for a second. I'll be back.
Okay, so um if there's no discussion, do we have a motion to accept the bond amount of eighty-five thousand five five zero? And release lots one, two, and three on Gatsby Lane?
So move.
Was that Mr. Jamie?
Yes.
Okay, do it a second?
I'll second.
Is that Mr. McDonald?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any discussion? All on favor?
All right, cool.
Hi.
All right.
Uh, sorry, but it has to be a roll call vote.
Oh. I'm so used to doing it the other way. I I apologize. So uh I'll do a roll call vote on the motion to release lots one, two, three, and accept the bond of eighty-five five zero on Gatsby, is it Lane or?
Drive.
Gatsby Drive.
Gatsby Drive. So, Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Jamie?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay.
Excuse me, Pat?
Yes.
Wouldn't it be the other way around that we accept the money first, and once it's received, then we release the lots?
So that was my next question. Do we, did we receive the money yet?
Not tonight.
We've already.
We have not uh received uh actual bond money yet.
No, you you've already received the bond.
You Yes, so I you did just submit to us an insurance, uh, surety, however, wasn't the actual bond itself. I think you you submitted like paperwork that showed that you would, you were approved for it.
Don't we, don't we, don't we, isn't this a cash bond, Mr. Antonero?
No, it's just about, no, the bond, about four of these, uh, four of these bonds, like, uh, Mr. Romulus. We don't accept paperwork. We actually, an actual cash bond gets paid. That's, if you look at what Mr. Castaneda did, that's exactly what he did.
It's a cash bond.
Look at uh what they did on Trinity Circle, uh, in the other subdivision, that's what it it it's not papers. Uh, well, we actually require a cash bond.
What, what, I'm sorry, what was required? What was required in the in the mail that was sent to us was, was a, was a bond, insurance shorty bond, which we have obtained that bond from the insurance company guaranteeing the amount of ninety thousand five fifty to be paid should in case there's any issue with this road. So that full amount is guaranteed by the, by the insurance company, the Hanover Insurance Company. And we've already paid for this insurance bond as well.
So we don't, but Mr. Mr. Romulus and Mr. Antonero, we don't accept anything but a cash bond in this town, correct?
It is cash bond, it is cash, cash bond paid to the town of Bridgewater.
And um just to reiterate, reiterate what uh Mrs. Dora said, um, we agree and and vote on the um on the amount for the bond, and then once they provide that bond to us, we can then uh release the covenant.
Right, well, we won't sign the covenant until it's paid, correct?
Yes.
That's correct. You can't, you can't take the vote, you can't take the vote to uh release it, but you don't, you don't actually release it until the payment is made.
But just for clar-
That way you don't, you don't have to schedule yet another meeting.
Just for clarification, Mr. Antonero. And Mr. Ramus, we don't take a bond from Hanover Insurance. We actually want the cash, correct?
Yeah, check, we, a check reading to the town of Bridgewater in the sum of eighty-five thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
Correct.
I'm I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm trying to get some clarification. Sorry, Mr. Chairman. The uh, the insurance bond is as good as cash to the town, and we have already applied, once the uh request was made from Gatsby Drive Associates, we sent out a request to to several insurance companies. Hanover Insurance was willing to provide us with this bond, which it wa- what was requested. We sent out a similar request to the insurance company, so they guaranteed that that request will be met. And we have purchased that insurance bond already and provided it to the town. So I'm I'm, I just feel like this is punitive to have to ask us to go and now cancel that and provide cash bond for a road that we've already started, that all the peripheral is what is needed to complete it. We've already done the major work on the road. The peripheral work, which we don't want to be destroyed, is why we are getting this bond in the first place. So I think this would be very punitive to to us, to have to provide cash bond to the town. I mean, of insurance bond.
Yeah, but I think our rules and regs, Mr. Ramus, Mr. Ramus and Mr. Antonero, if I'm correct, say it has to be cash, and we've never accepted anything but cash, correct?
That is correct.
I I, well, I didn't see it in what was sent to me, that it was cash bond. It was never uh described as such. So I mean, I I really would want that verified, because it's, it wa- it did not say cash bond. It says shorty bond, not cash bond.
If I can interrupt and inject for a minute, I don't think we need to to hash this out, because this is a procedural issue. I think the board can vote, and then um Elijah, myself, and Azu can sit down with um Mr. Shoney and and hash out the procedural issues as to whether or not what he submitted is acceptable and what does need to be submitted.
Okay, so.
Go along with that.
All right, but I, but as far as our, would we have to, would we have to grant a waiver for that? If we're gonna, I mean, I, I feel more comfortable with the cash like we've al- we've always done, but I mean, it's.
Uh, yeah, so um I, like uh Mrs. Burke uh mentioned, we were just uh have to virtually sit down and uh talk about this offline, but we can still vote on the the calculation.
But we're we're voting, I mean, I guess I'm voting assuming we're receiving a cash bond, that's all I'm voting? So if that were to change, would this come back to us?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So it's the understanding that it's gonna be a cash bond to release those three lots, correct?
Yes, now, that is my recommendation.
Okay.
With 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 the provision, uh, excuse me, sir, with the provision that um the the what was requested was not a cash bond, it was a shorty bond.
Where, Mr.? Uh, I lost it. Mr. Is it, am I saying it correctly? Shoney?
Shoney.
Shoney, I'm sorry. Was this something you received from the town?
Correct.
Okay.
If you could, um, Mr. Shoney, if you could forward that to myself and Elijah, whatever, because I'm not aware of what you received, I'll take a look at it, and then I will look at what you submitted, and then we'll um, we'll resolve this issue.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, so we're assuming it's gonna be eighty-five five five zero in cash, and then the three lots will be released, okay? All right.
Yes.
Any um other board discussion or comments on this? And Miss Dora, I'm sorry, we are, you, we already voted, correct?
Yes.
All right, so um next up, we have um next on the agenda, we have Winterberry Lane, which is Quail Hollow LLC. This is a lot release and a bond calculation. And Mr. Ramus.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Antonero.
Mr. Chairman, um, I don't think there's any other item on the agenda that uh uh needs my uh participation, and uh I've been working with uh Mr. Gallagher, uh, the engineer on this project, as he's survey of record. So at this point, I will exit this uh meeting, and uh and I'd like the record to note, uh, reflect the fact that I have not participated, Mr. Chairman.
All right, just Mr. Mr. Antonero.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Mr. Antonero.
Uh, Mr.? Are you gonna be uh on the meeting for the Stonehill Lane?
Because I, and I will be recusing my.
Can we then?
I would like you.
Can we do that out of order, Mr.?
You you can do it out of whatever.
Yeah, can we take that out of order then?
Yes, Mr. Antonero, we can, but let me just disclose that I have a conflict with that. I live on the street, and I'm an owner of that. So I will sign off, and then if somebody will text me when I could sign back on, I'll do that if that's acceptable.
Okay, on that basis, Mr. Chairman, on that basis, why don't I just sign off, and somebody can text me, continue with Winterberry? And I'll, and I can be to uh call back uh by Mr. Burke or Mr. Romulus on my text.
So.
No, I I think, Mr. Antonero, we you, we need you on for Stonehill Lane. At least I would like you on if I'm going to chair that part.
Correct, then that's what, so.
He'll come back.
Yeah, so so I'll I'll do this one, and then Mr. um Antonero, I'll sign off, he'll sign back on.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so again, Mr. Ramus, this is another request for a lot release, correct?
Uh, that's correct.
And then in your packet, you sent a bond release calculation, but then today you sent an as-built and a revised road bond calculation?
That is correct.
That reduced the. That reduced the bond amount and also took out the stormwater maintenance request?
Yes.
Um, so, again, what lots are they asking? Is this three lots or four lots of division?
Uh, this is a four lots subdivision.
And are they asking for all four lots to be released?
Yes.
Okay. And we have a bond calculation that was provided, updated today, of seventy-four thousand three hundred?
Yes.
Is Mr. Gallagher with us, or is he not with us?
Uh, I believe we have, uh, Mr. Gormley here.
Okay. So, is there any discussion on this? Are we okay with it?
Uh, I have no issue with it. Um, there was, uh, I have no issue with the, uh, bond calculation, there was, um, uh, just, it was brought to my attention that the drainage, um, easement, uh, didn't coincide, coincide with the, um, the, the pipe, the piping that's going through it, so basically, um, just as a caveat, we'll just hold the bond, uh, until the applicant is able to provide an updated, uh, drainage asphalt, and then at that time, we can, um, release whatever amount is, uh, left over according to that.
So you, so you're holding, so you're leaving the five thousand dollar drainage asphalt in, in the bond until it's corrected?
No.
No, the, the bond fee will, uh, stay at, uh, or the bond amount will stay at the seventy-four thousand three hundred, and, uh, we'll just hold on to the bond money until the, um, uh, and, until they provide an, an updated, uh, drain asphalt plan.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, the, I believe the suggestion is to, uh, if any, um, bond requ, uh, bond reductions are requested, to not issue any money reductions back until we receive a corrected plan. I believe that's the request.
Okay. Right, is everybody on the board comfortable with what they see in front of them? And are we okay, so, so is there a motion, first of all, to accept the bond calculation form, and once the, the bond is received to release lots? Is it one, two, three, and four, Mr. Romulus?
Yes.
So is there a motion to do that?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
So you're making the motion, uh, Mr. McDonald, to, once we receive the bond of seventy-four thousand three hundred, to allow for the release of lots one, two, three, and four?
That's correct.
Um, and again, just with that note that Ms. Burke made, about, uh, the, uh, reductions not being made until the asphalt's corrected?
Correct.
So do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Jamie, any discussion?
And it's a cash bond? Is that?
Yes, cash bond.
Um, any discussion? So roll call again?
Yes, roll call, please.
Mr. Gallagher? Yes. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Guerino?
Yes.
Mr. Jamie?
Yes.
Any yes? Okay. So, this brings up the question that both of those lot releases that we just did tonight required, how many signatures, Ms. Doll?
Three.
How do, how are we going to handle that over the next couple of weeks?
So, um, I can, um, answer that. So we've been, um, working cooperatively with the building department. Um, and I think if we send them a copy of your vote, um, and a note from either myself or Mr. Romulus, they've been willing to, um, take that as a lot release and with the anticipation of a signed document, when everybody's back in the building and back working together, we, we did that at a previous subdivision, um, that you had released a while back. Um, so I think, um, going forward for this, that's how we would move forward.
Okay. Is everybody comfortable with that?
Have to be.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, do we have any other board business? Mr. Romulus?
Uh, no, no board business, um, and just due to the circumstances, we'll have to, um, get the minutes from the three, four meetings to, uh, at a, uh, a later date and time. Um, I think that, other than that, we have no updates from our side.
Do we have any public that are waiting to make public comments or anything, uh, that you can see?
Um, let me see. Um, no one's, uh, raised their hands. The people do have the ability at this point to unmute themselves if they would like to make any comments related to the cases.
Okay, well, all right, so if there's nothing else, I'm going to log off for the night, because I have a financial interest, and I live on and am one of the applicants on the next item.
Just one thing, Elijah?
Yes.
Don't all the minutes together at once.
I'm sorry.
Don't send all the minutes together at once. I sleep reading them.
Okay.
Okay, um, anything? Any directors' reports? I mean, I, I think tonight went pretty well, right? Overall, considering everything?
Yeah, I think it's, uh, been pretty smooth.
Okay.
There were all ups.
I, I'm going to sign off. And, um, everybody stay healthy unless you need me. Mr. Jamie, it's all yours.
Great.
Let me, let me, let me log off, and I'll, I'll talk to you later.
All right.
Thanks, guys. Good night.
All right, the, the last thing on the agenda is Stonehill Lane C and D Realty Trust. And it's, um, maybe, Elijah, you can go through what, what is intended here.
Did you text, um?
Yeah, Azu is back on the meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, yes, so, the, oh.
I don't like you.
Yeah, I'm trying to, trying to get the, uh, Stonehill Lane back up, but, um, basically, it was a, uh, reconfiguring of a drainage lot and the abutting lot, and the agreement was that, um, there'd be plantings that went along that drainage lot, which would, um, uh, kind of provide like a buffer between, um, said lots. And I'm trying to share the screen of the plans, which are right here. So, yes, um, so it's changing what, one seventeen A and one sixteen, which would then become one seventeen A and one sixteen A with the accompanied landscape plan.
Um, I, I have a question, Elijah, and that is, first of all, it's a minor modification. When was it determined as a minor modification?
Uh, well, for a subdivision plan, um, it's, um, affecting the lot lines, so it had to go as a modification.
Right, are we voting on that tonight?
Yes.
Okay, that's, I just.
Yeah, so first, voting on whether it's major or minor, and then.
And is, uh, Mr. Antonero back on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, my, my, I noticed your, your comments about the trees. My question is, if you're making the drainage lot smaller, is that going to affect the lot at all?
So, so the, my concern, uh, Chairman, uh, my concern was the, uh, the tree growth, whether the lateral movement, lateral growth of the root system will impede the functioning of the, uh, drainage basin. If you look at the basin itself, the asphalt, the configuration of the basin, it still maintains the, uh, ten-foot accessway all around it. That does not diminish, but my concern of, uh, my concern was that the, the type of tree that they're planting, if it has a lateral root growth of ten feet or more, then it will encroach into the, uh, basin, uh, embankment. And so I asked them, uh, to provide a landscape plan, uh, with a certification on the, uh, lateral root of the root system, and in a certification by the engineer of record, that in fact, that that root system will not impede the hydraulic function of the basin. And I believe, uh, Elijah, if you, if you would, uh, can you, um, go to that new certification clause, because I have not seen that. They, they revised the point right there. Could you, could you zoom into that, so I can see it, to see if it's consistent?
Yes. Can you see it?
Yeah.
Hear what you want?
Yeah.
Okay, well.
Yeah, so, so, so if the board were to approve this, I would recommend that our, once the tree planting is done, that, uh, uh, that, um, additional monitoring for at least two years, uh, be, uh, imposed, because this is a unique to what we've done before. So I would, I would like to, uh, include a monitoring of at least two years, uh, two years after the plant is, uh, uh, installed.
Again, just to clarify for me, Mr. Antonero, is the basin itself going to be smaller?
No, 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 the basin itself, but what happens, Mr. Aggerian, is when you plant a tree, naturally.
I understand what you're saying about trees. I'm just, I'm just wondering whether the base, if this is affecting the sides of the basin. What you're saying is, it's not, it's just that the trees are going to be planted alongside it.
That's correct. So the reason I'm, uh, I want the two-year monitoring is if in fact, the, uh, the root system have grown laterally towards the, uh, side slope, then we can, uh, require them to put, uh, one of those, uh, polyvinyl, uh, barriers, uh, what we call a hydraulic barrier, that will, that will, uh, uh, terminate that possibility.
I understand, and I, I don't disagree with that at all. I, I was just questioning whether this is going to affect the size. And, and obviously, uh,
No.
It's, it's, what you're suggesting to me is a good idea. It's unfortunate that when we do, um, approve, uh, basins, that they have all sorts of growth in them, they're not cleaned out. That's another story.
But didn't the landscape architects say that it's not going to affect the roots?
So, so what they did originally, sorry, what they did originally was just to provide, if you look at the, uh, plan notes up on the, uh, top right corner, uh, they indicated the lateral growth, but that was just a note. I wanted the, uh, uh, responsible professionals to actually sign a, a, a statement, and then adding a note. That is why they added that, uh, certification clause.
Are there any other, any other questions from the board? Any questions from the board?
Well, that's what I was asking, the, the thing down lower right-hand corner, that was saying that it, those roots you don't have to worry about, right?
Uh, yeah, it addresses that, but, uh, just like you have all the conditions of approval, after you approve a subdivision, you approve it, but then you put a performance standard that you would expect. So the insurance policy that I'm, uh, recommending is that a two-year, at least two-year monitoring happened, but I thought the planting has been done.
Okay.
All right, any other questions from the board?
Well, yeah, well, I'm sorry.
Anybody else?
Yeah, uh, I have a question for you. So if we put, if you put this two-year, um, uh, provision on there, that's going to now affect being able to close out the subdivision for two years?
Well, we will not, uh, uh, we, no, because if you want the town, that's the, that's a good, uh, uh, question, Larry. That would affect that to, uh, the acceptance of the road. That would be correct, because it would be acceptance of the drainage basin as well.
Well, isn't there a responsibility by the engineer or the architect who certified that the roots aren't going to grow that? Isn't that, doesn't that responsibility fall on them a bit, too?
So, so for example, when you, when you, uh, get a, a subdivision, and you approve the subdivision, right? You approve the subdivision, uh, you, um, uh, you put conditions for subdivision.
No, I understand that.
Right, so, 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 yes, uh, the certification is, uh, it's good. Uh, what I do think, however, is I suppose, I suppose that the, uh, for the two-year monitoring, the, 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 the drainage basin becomes subservient by the virtue of the easement. So basically, uh, the town, uh, is given a private citizen an easement over a, a property to be owned and controlled, and to be owned by the town. So if you're going to be given that easement, uh, the monitoring allows us to ensure that that easement will function as intended. I suppose if it doesn't, the town has a right to go and move that, so you can put that condition in lieu of, in lieu of that.
No, I, I understand, I understand your concern. I understand the reason why you want to have a check, that, that it's perfectly logical. But my question was more along the lines that we hired an expert. We hired a landscape architect that was hired, and, and he certified it, saying that these things aren't going to be there, that the roots aren't going to be a problem, and if there is a problem, shouldn't we go after the landscape architect who certified that they weren't going to be a problem?
But in the meantime, in the meantime, the business is not functioning. And then, and then if you go after the person, uh, how, uh, when have you seen the courts move fast?
I don't, so can I, can I just ask the question, if we're, if, if we're worried that the root system is going to go towards the basin, and the way to fix that is to install that barrier you were talking about, why wouldn't we have them install the barrier at the same time they're installing the plantings and not worry about if it works and not works?
That is a good question.
Right, well, you can do that, but the, the reason I suggested the, uh, recommended that barrier as a stopgap of, uh, preventative measure is if in fact, what we, what is certified, well, let me ask, look, let me put it the other way. We get septic systems designed. I'm an engineer, right? And engineer, engineer certifies a septic plan that is designed according to code. You build a septic system, why do we repair septic systems? Because they fail.
Correct.
Okay, even though we had the certification.
All right, I, I agree with where you're going with this, Azu, but, you know, I, I like the comment that I just heard. I think that there's a common ground here, so that it doesn't hold up the subdivision, and that is just require, just say that you're okay with the planning scheme, but that you want the hydraulic barrier along the edge of it, and that way, you know, this won't hold up. It would be actually pretty hard to put the hydraulic barrier in later anyway. It'd be much easier to put it in now, because if the roots are going in that direction, you'd have a difficult time putting in the hy, hydraulic barrier later. So I would say, if that's your concern, make it a provision that we just got to put a hydraulic barrier in now, so that we don't have to have it tied to a two-year timeframe, which would really kind of mess up the, uh, closeout of the subdivision.
That, that, that'll, uh, that would be fine with me. I, I have no issue with that. I just.
Prevention, that's awesome.
I'm just looking at it sequential, uh, if that is satisfied, so the reason I said that.
Yeah, and I understand, I can understand the concern, so I think that's the way to make sure that we, uh, can address it.
Okay, any other comments from anybody, board, Mr. Antonero?
No, no, if you would, uh, I, I have no problem, uh, about being a minor modification. And, uh, yes, uh, that insurance policy, if we can, uh, implement it now through the installation of the, uh, hydraulic barrier, then I have, then, yeah. Then there's no need to monitor, there's no need, there will not be any need to monitor it for two years. Then there's no need to, money, there's no need, there will not be any need to monitor it for two years.
Very good.
Okay.
All right, then, if there are no other questions, then I'll take a motion on whether this should be a minor modification or not.
That would be our recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'll make a motion that it's a minor modification.
Is there a second to the motion?
A second.
A second to the motion, any discussion on the motion?
Michael did.
I'm sorry?
Michael did the second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any, any discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Grino?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes also. Then I'll take a motion on the, uh, the, um, changing the drain, well, not changing drainage slot, but the idea of, uh, putting trees in a barrier in. That was just discussed. Is there a motion to that effect?
Um, I'll make a motion to approve. So just a question before I make this motion. Are you going to revise these drawings and resubmit showing the barrier?
I think that it might suffice just to be able to have that as a condition.
Okay.
No, it's a condition, that would be your, Mr. Gallagher, of that being just a condition is fine. Because we will, uh, we will go out and inspect it. I just want, want to recommend that, that part of that, uh, that motion included an inspection by the town engineer during the installation.
Okay.
All right. Any discussion? I'm sorry, wait a minute, did we get a motion?
So I'll make a motion to accept the plantings along with the barrier and, um, and along with inspection of the barrier during installation by the town engineer.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Motion's made, seconded, any discussion on the motion? During none, uh, we'll vote on it. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Grino?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes also. We're done. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Good night, Larry.
Good night, now.
Night, Larry.
We're all saying goodnight to each other. Now you can actually, since you're home, you can go right to bed. You can just sit down. Not have to drive home anymore.
Good night, all stairs, please.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second it.
Wait a minute. Who made the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Jean's making the motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Grino?
Yes.
I'll vote yes, we're done.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Get more volunteers if you do it this way.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.